I'd like to call this December 21st, 2022, the Funding Board of Appeals meeting to order. I think the first order of business we have tonight is to approve the minutes from the November meeting. Did everybody have a chance to look at it over?
Yes.
I sent over some edits. Did you get them, Gretchen?
Yes, I did.
Did everyone get a chance to see those?
No, you probably didn't.
I looked through it and sent it out.
Well, yeah, what I had just add was kind of a discussion that was had on the Roos application between the neighbor Doug Lagnow and the applicant about the discussions and why the public hearing was continued. And I just explained why Whitman was not accepted at that meeting due to the changes, but we have received the updated application from Whitman through evidence.
Do they need any edits to that or?
I'm going to approve it.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
One second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Are you close? Okay. Minutes are approved.
Should we do a roll call?
Oh, should we do a roll call? We don't need to do a roll call for minutes. Okay.
No, I mean for the whole.
For the whole meeting. Do a roll call for the whole meeting?
Yeah.
We usually do a roll call for the resolutions, really everything else is usually acceptable. Okay. So the first item, the new item on the agenda would be Whitman's application. Do you want to?
Well, then we have the calendar to improve. The 2023 schedule.
So do you have a chance to look at the 2023 schedule? Do you want to just go through that first one?
Oh, wait, do we have to go through that? As long as nobody has any issues with the dates, that's really the only thing that's.
It's the same as the third.
It's the same as normal.
Three days.
But that's the normal. If they're all on the third Wednesday, it's the normal.
Okay. No time change or date change, so?
Yeah, no.
I make a motion to approve the 2023 meeting schedule. Do I have a second?
One second.
All in favor? Aye. Are you close? Okay. So that's that. So a new business happens. Case 1036. And when you signed last time and you made some updates to your application, so all of you take this through.
Okay. What happened last time? We had put in setbacks that we had applied for in '21, but the Funding Board of Appeals made modifications to our application and approved different dimensions, which now this is updated to show what was approved in 2021. And the same new plan was presented last night to the Planning Board.
Okay.
So the variances that we're asking for are front yard setback, a variance of 94 foot seven, 150 feet is required, and we want to be at 55 foot five, which is very close to the house that was there before what setback was. We wanted to, on the north side yard, get an area variance of 78 foot nine and a half inches. 100 feet is required, and we are positioning it so that we'll have 20 foot, 21 foot two and a half inches from the north property line. Thank you. Can you see it?
Yeah, I've just got to hold it down.
Okay. Very faint. The north property line to this line where the edge of the house would be. And then on the south yard, again, 100 feet is required. If you were to do the 100 feet, the two property lines would cross each other. But, so we are able to get 27 foot three from this line to there. And then there's a lot coverage variance requested as well. The new residence coverage is 1135.75, and when you add in the barrage, it comes to 1770.75, and the allowable is 1163. So it's a variance of 607.75 square feet.
Was that what came along after the hearing?
Yeah.
Didn't remember that portion of it. Okay.
And just for the ZBA's reminder, so what the, and Captain, sorry, you can correct me a little bit. The foundation had been demolished, and so it's pretty much almost the same size. I think a little bit bigger than what had previously been there. And initially, the applicant wanted to shift the, in 2021, wanted to shift it eight feet to the south, and so the modified variances shifted it four feet. And those changes are reflective. So the variances that are requested are the same ones that the ZBA had granted last year, but they have just expired because of the time period.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from anybody on this application?
Yeah, yeah.
I think since we're familiar with it, we just had those issues with the numbers.
Yeah, and the numbers are.
So what we would need to do next on this is accept the application?
Yep. Yep, you can accept the application as complete, as long as you don't need any more information.
I make a motion to accept the application as complete. Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor? So then the public hearing would begin in January?
January 18th.
And can you make that happen?
Yes.
Okay.
And so the Planning Board is also currently looking at this application. They've already accepted it as a, or classified it as a type two action under seeker. I would recommend that the ZBA accept that. It should be a type two action, which means that there's no further seeker action on this for the ZBA.
Okay, that makes sense. Is there anything else you need to?
Is the ZBA okay? Do you want to just ask for a motion for accepting it as a seeker?
I make a motion that we accept the Planning Board's determination as a seeker. And do I have a second?
One second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then this should be referred to both the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board and the WAC CAD. So Gretchen, would you be able to take care of those referrals? And I think that should be it. Yeah, I know you guys need to do a site visit purely after the public hearings, and being that you, you know, you have also visited it back in 2021, so it's up to you whether you want to do a site visit, but that can be discussed after the public hearing.
If you were to do the site visit before, would it be possible to approve it after the public hearing?
Well, so Scott is doing the resolution, so I don't know if he would be okay with that. I can mention it, being that this has kind of been done before. But I'll leave that to him, but he could be done.
Okay. And then my other question is, are the public notices still good from when submitted them? We have to do a new public notice.
It would have to be a new post, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll see you on the meeting. So I think the next order of business is the Roos application, and we had let that public hearing open from last time. I think since our last meeting, there has been an agreement that has been, has come together and been signed by both parties on some landscaping, which is very good to see. So I think, do we have any other discussion, new items, anything from the board or people?
Yeah, I would open the public hearing since it was continued.
I thought we just left it open.
Well, it's continued open.
Okay, all right.
It's a, you know, being that we have the agreement, it's probably going to be closed, but if anybody from the public wishes to speak, they can do so.
Okay. Bye.
In fact, it's just state hearing.
I know. Beautiful, live in beautiful downtown, 624 Hager Road for 65 years consecutively. So we have an agreement and everything, so what's going to happen next? You guys are going to make a close, open hearing, and then you make a decision today on what's going to happen?
So, yeah, what would happen is that if you have any additional comments you'd like to make, you can certainly make them during this. A resolution has been prepared. So if we close the public hearing tonight, we'll go right into discussions of the resolutions. I know this is also still before the Planning Board, so if the variances are granted, then we'll continue it in front of the Planning Board.
Okay, thank you. So here's why I ask that question. So do I ever have to come back again? So what if he don't grant his variance? Or what if he reduces the size of that building and he wants to do something else? Do I have to come back and?
So if the, if the decision is accepted tonight?
Then we'll get it out.
Yeah, then, you know, if the variances are granted, then they move forward with the Planning Board, and then they get approval that the Planning Board, if they want to do something else that requires variance, they would have to come back with a whole new application from the zoning board. Starts the whole process.
So the whole process starts over? And then I will be notified? I will be notified?
Yep. Yep. I think if they need any new variances, just like this Whitman, they do a whole new public hearing on whatever those variances may be. If they need anything, and then if they're in front of the Planning Board, then the whole process starts again, and you would always be notified if there's a new public hearing.
Okay, very good. I understand. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I make a motion that we close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
One second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Do you want to have any discussions on this stuff? So we do have a resolution that was prepared by Tim. We can either go through that resolution, or if the board has any additional discussions that I'd like to talk about, you can do that and then move on to the regulations. What if Tim goes through the?
I do have one question. I noticed that, I didn't notice it before, but Lower Acker Hook Partners LLC. Is this going to be a business?
Another, so, Tim, there was an original subdivision in this, the original parcel, current parcel, was possibly 38 acres, something like that.
Yeah, 29 acres.
Right. And so then it was split in two. And so the applicant from the subdivision was Lower Acker Hook Partners LLC. That was the applicant from the subdivision. So the current owner, Nidim, has it?
Yeah, it's actually Lower Acker Hook Partners has been dissolved, and it's, we've separated a few parcels out, so this parcel is under my name now.
Under your name.
Not under. It's not a business. It would just be us two teams or two keyboarding others and we'd buy them.
And even if it, sometimes LLCs are formed to purchase property, even for residential.
Can we keep this in the resolution?
Yeah. That's the applicant's.
Well, the original, so, Nidim, with it, with it, sort of. I, probably, I don't know, three weeks ago, a month ago.
Who's the current, who's the owner of record?
It's under my name.
Okay, so that's how, that's whoever is the owner of record is the one who's.
So they're going to take out the lower.
I always preface the application with Nidim Roos with, you know, and at the time that you initially made the application, Lower Acker Hook Partners, it still had to still return ownership.
We can always just put, like, also known as.
That way it matches the application.
Yeah, that's a good idea. So we'll just put a little acknowledgement that it's, they're one in the same, but it's, Nidim is the.
So I can just do also known as.
Yeah. So you want to go through the, or, yeah?
I think if Tim took us through the resolution, and then we can have any discussion or questions.
All right. The resolution of the Town of Rhinebeck's zoning Board of Appeals in the matter of the area variance application of Nidim Roos. Is that correct or I spelt it wrong? ZBA case number 1033. Whereas background applicant, applicant in question, Nidim Roos, also known as Lower Acker Hook Partners LLC, is referred hereafter as the applicant. This appeal is from the Town of Rhinebeck Acting Zoning Enforcement Officer, ZEO, determination letter dated July 14th of 2022. Property involved, this appeal involves property located on vacant land on Acker Hook Road in the Town of Rhinebeck, and which bears a tax parcel number 135089-6268-00200519. The applicant's property is 13.91 acres in an area, in an area and is located in the RC5 zoning district. Representation, the applicant is represented before the board by Mark R. Vermensky of the firm Mark R. Vermensky PE LS PC Consulting Engineer, and surveyor Christina Ducharme, Ducharme of Christina Ducharme Architect, PLLC. Description of proposed project, the applicant's project is to strive as follows. Applicant seeks to build a five-bedroom principal dwelling unit with an attached porch, porchier, 5,056 square feet, an in-ground pool, and detached accessory dwelling unit of 4,480 square feet. The detached accessory building unit will be two stories. On the second floor would be a one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit. On the first, it would be a garage for vehicle storage. The accessory dwelling unit was originally proposed 25 feet tall, but has been reduced to 24.5 feet tall. It has a total gross floor area of 4,480 square feet. As shown on plans dated Lagnow Landscape Buffer dated November 16th, 2022, drawn by Mark R. Vermensky, and plans drawn by KDA titled Roos Residence, issued October 27th, 2022. Number of area variance required, the applicant requires three variances. Area variance one, the first area variance sought by the applicant. Applicant is from the Town of Rhinebeck zoning law, section 125-27A1. No accessory structure shall exceed 20 feet in height in any residential district. Applicant proposes a height of 24.5 feet for the detached accessory dwelling unit. Therefore, he is required requesting a variance of 4.5 feet. Number seven, area variance number two, the second area variance sought by the architect. Applicant, excuse me, is from zoning law section 125-27A4. All roofed or otherwise enclosed accessory structures except for agricultural buildings shall need be aggregated comprised not more floor area than the principal dwelling of the lot or 1,500 square feet, whichever is more restrictive. The applicant proposes a detached accessory dwelling unit to be 4,480 square feet. Therefore, he is requesting a variance of 290, 2,998 square feet. Area variance number three, the third area variance sought by the applicant is from zoning law section 125-68E4. Attached accessory dwelling unit shall contain a maximum of 900 square feet of habitable space in RC5 zoning district. The applicant initially proposed the accessory dwelling unit to be 1,630 square feet of habitable space. However, due to the reducing of the height of the room, the accessory dwelling unit is now proposed to be 1,092 square feet of habitable space. Therefore, he is requesting a variance of 192 square feet. Section two, ZBA review. Timing, timing of this appeal. The applicant filed an appeal with his board on July 17th, 2022, and has paid with reckless speed. Appeal was filed within 60 days of the date of the ZEO's determination appealed from, and thus the applicant is timely as required by section 125-125B of the Town of Rhinebeck zoning law. Acceptance of the application as complete on August 17th, 2022. This board deemed the application to be complete and accepted for review by this board. SECPA, the Planning Board is simultaneously reviewing this application for site plan and specialty improvement. On September, on September 6th, 2022, the Planning Board classified this action as a type two pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECPA. We accept this classification of action, and no further environmental review is required from the ZBA. Public hearing scheduled, referrals and responses. The ZBA initially scheduled a public hearing on September 21st at 7:00 PM. The public hearing was not noticed by applicant, and therefore rescheduled for October 19th. The following referrals were made. Duchess County Planning Board, County Planning Department, re-determined that this application is not required when referred to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Economic Development pursuant to section 239-M of the New York State General Municipal Law and section 125-125E of the Town of Rhinebeck zoning law. The Town of Rhinebeck Plural Planning Board has required by section 125-125E of the Town of Rhinebeck zoning law, this application is referred to the planning board on August 19th, 2022. The planning board responded on September 23rd, 2022, and found that the requested variances raise no significant planning or environmental concern. Town of Rhinebeck Conservation Advisory Board re-determined this application was required to be referred to the Town of Rhinebeck Conservation Advisory Board on August 19th, 2022 pursuant to chapter nine, section 9-5A1 and 9-5A8A and 9-6A of the Town of Rhinebeck Town Code because the applicant proposes the use and development of local space. As of the date of this resolution, the Town of Rhinebeck, the Town Conservation Advisory Board has not responded. As 30 days have elapsed since referral has made to the Town Conservation Advisory Board, the ZBA is able to make a final determination without a response from the Town Conservation Advisory Board. Site visit, on October 29th, 2028, two ZBA members, Scott Burden, Tim Allenbrook, Richard Kopitschinsky, and Catherine Clark, visited the property. On December 3rd, Timothy Economically also visited the applicant's property and the surrounding neighborhood to observe firsthand onsite conditions, property characteristics, setting, surrounding, setting, surrounding environment, and character of the surrounding neighborhood. The purpose of this site visit was to observe the property and the surrounding area to inform board for the upcoming decision. Site visit was conducted solely together and without information, no business or deliberations were conducted during the site visit. Public hearing, the public hearing on this appeal was duly advertised and held at the Town Hall on October 19th, 2022. During the course of the public hearing, we received a letter from Christian Mondico dated October 17th, 2022, stating, "The application for a zoning variance is, in my opinion, in keeping with the special character on the neighborhood." We also received a letter from Douglas Lagnow dated October 17th, 2022. Mr. Lagnow expressed his concerns about the building size and location, and building size and the location will obstruct his views to the south and decrease his property value. On November 16th, 2022, Mr. Lagnow's attorney, Wayne Thomas, noted that a memorandum of agreement was being discussed between Mr. Lagnow and his employees to discuss stringing options to mitigate potential impacts to Mr. Lagnow's view. At the time of the regular ZBA meeting in November, the agreement had not yet been signed, but was actively being discussed. On December 19th, 2022, an agreement between Mr. Lagnow and Mr. Roos was finally executed regarding potential landscape plans that would alleviate the visual impacts for Mr. Lagnow, which included the prospect of planning approximately eight evergreen trees behind the barn and specific set of fields, which would be equivalent to eight to 10 feet in height. The public hearing was closed on December 21st, 2022. Findings of facts, findings of fact and conclusions of law, balancing test. In our review of the variance sought, we have considered the benefit to the applicant. If the area variance is granted, as weighted against the detriment to the health and safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such program, we determine that the variances requested would be granted because there is little detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by the granting of this variance, particularly given the mitigation efforts offered by the applicant both reducing the height of the structure and communicating with the neighbor to install a landscape buffer to reduce visible impact to his neighbor. The accessory structure is approximately 500 feet from the neighbor's house through woods. During the fall and winter months, the structure will be viewable, but Doug Lagnow and I have a signed agreement amongst themselves in which the applicant will install evergreen trees as to help block the north side of the structure from Mr. Lagnow's view. The structure will also be set far back from the road as not to be viewable from Acker Hook Road, and hopefully to match the surrounding woods. Consideration of the five, a five-factor balancing test. In our review of the variances sought and considered, of the balancing between the benefit to the applicant as weighted against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community, we have considered the five factors required by section 125-124C1 of the Town of Rhinebeck zoning law as follows. If the variances are granted, will they cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or cause a detriment to nearby properties? We feel this answer to this question is no. The accessory structure will be viewable, will not be viewable from Acker Hook Road. The structure will be painted a natural color as to color in with the surrounding woods, and. and it was agreed between the applicant and neighbor Doug Lagnow that a buffer of evergreen trees will be planted to further obstruct the view of northern, of the northern neighbor. In addition, the structure will not have any windows facing the northern neighbor's house, thus reducing light noise. The, from the benefit sought by the applicant, be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than these area variances. We find the answer to this question is yes. The accessory structure could be smaller in size. One of the purposes of this structure is to house up to five vehicles of the applicant's collection, which dictates a portion of the size of the structure. The Z.B.A. discussed with the applicant as to whether the structure and accessory dwelling unit could be expanded from the first, uh, from the first floor, but due to the property's numerous rock ledges, wet areas, and downhill nature of the parcels, the parcel limits the ability to move or shift the location without substantially increasing in construction costs to the applicant. The applicant has made adjustments to reduce the size of the variance, including reducing the roof height of the accessory structure and taking out the two-story car lift on the first floor. Is the requested area variance substantial? We find the answer to this is yes. In particular, the area variance requested from the zoning law one-two-five-dash-two-seven-A-four is, is substantial. Zoning law section one-two-five-dash-two-seven-A-four states, "All roofed or otherwise enclosed accessory structures, except for agricultural buildings, shall be in aggregate comprised not more floor area than the principal dwelling on the lot of one thousand five, uh, one thousand five hundred square feet, whichever is more restricted." Applicant proposes four thousand four hundred and eighty-eight square feet, therefore requesting a variance of two hundred and ninety, two thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight square feet, a fraction of double what the code allows, allows. The applicant has reduced the penalty accessory structure, which would reduce, which has reduced the variance requested for the height of the accessory structure and habitable space of the structure. However, the request of the variance of certain parts substantial. Will the proposed variance have an adverse impact on physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? We find the answer to this question is no. The structure will be painted with a natural color to blend with the surrounding woods. Evergreens will be planted on the north side of the structure to reduce visibility from northern neighbor and, and structure will not be visible from agricultural growth. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? We find the answer to this question is yes. The applicant is seeking a structure of a certain size to accommodate his car collection and incorporate, and incorporate an accessory dwelling unit on the second floor. Despite its size requirement, the accessory structure will not be visible from agricultural growth. The applicant has worked on agreement with the northern neighbor to alleviate potential visual impacts due to the size and location of the structure. Minimal variance requested. In addition to our review of the five factors of balancing test, we must also determine that this requested variance is the minimum variance is necessary and adequate to accomplish what is requested by the applicant, and that also preserves and protects the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety, and welfare of the community. We find the answer to this question is yes. One of the purposes of the structure is to be stored for the applicant's car, which does dictate the initial size of the structure. The structure could not be placed on another part of the property due to numerous rock ledges, wet areas, and downhill nature of the parcel limits the ability to move the location without substantial increase in construction costs. The structure will not be viewable from agricultural growth. The visual impacts to the northern, northern neighbor have been mitigated through agreement between the applicant and the neighbor, involving a proposed landscape plan with evergreens trees planted to obstruct the view of the neighboring property. The structure will be painted in natural color as to blend with the surrounding woods. In addition, the structure will not have any windows facing the northern neighbor's house, thus reduced light noise. Number sixteen, result of balancing, of the balancing test. Based on our analysis of the five factors discussed above and the consideration of having the minimal variance requested, we find that the balancing, balancing test papers granting the area variance sought. Now, therefore be resolved based on all facts described above and upon the reasoning described above as follows. The Z.B.A., Z.B.A. here by grants the requested variance from zoning law section one-two-five-dash-seven-A-one. No structure, no accessory structure shall exceed twenty feet in height. Uh, section one-two-five-dash-two-seven-A-four, all roofed or otherwise enclosed accessory structures, except for agricultural buildings, shall be aggregate comprised not more floor area than the principal dwelling on the lot of one thousand five hundred square feet, whichever is more restricted or restricted. And section one-two-five-dash-six-eight-E-four. Detached accessory buildings shall contain a max, maximum of nine hundred square feet of habitable space in the R.C. five zoning district. The benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment of the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such a grant. Our decision is supported by the balancing, balancing test of the five factors below. The requested variance will not result in undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and that the granting of the area variance would not convey the detriment to nearby properties. Stated above, the applicant positioned this issue building to reduce view from lower agricultural road and will paint structure to blend with the surrounding forest and install evergreen trees to block the view from the neighboring neighbor. The applicant has worked with the neighbor Doug Lagnow to express concern of visual impact on his property to the right. They're free to prescribe to buffering landscape conditions behind the barn and set of fields to alleviate the visual impacts to the adjoining property. The benefits sought by the applicant could be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the, an area variance, variance, such as, as designing a smaller accessory structure. However, one of the purposes of this accessory structure is to house up to five vehicles, which dictates a portion of the size of the structure. Furthermore, the accessory structure could not be, could not be moved or shifted without substantial increase in construction costs to the applicant due to numerous rock ledges, wet areas, and downhill nature of the parcel. The requested variance is substantial. However, visual, visual concerns have been alleviated with the prospect of landscape plan agreed between applicant and the neighborhood, and the structure will otherwise, uh, will not be otherwise be visible from agricultural growth. Requested variance will not have an adverse effect, effect on the impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or zoning district. The structure will be painted with a natural color to blend with the surrounding woods. Evergreen trees will be planted on the north side of the structure to reduce visibility from northern neighbor, and structure will not be visible from agricultural growth. The alleged, uh, activ, uh, the alleged difficulty is self-created. Section two, the Z.B.A., Z.B.A. hereby grants the requested variance from the zoning law section one-two-five-dash-two-seven-A-one, section one-two-five-dash-two-seven-A-four, and section one-two-five-dash-six-eight-E-four, subject to the conditions stated below. The applicant and Mr. Lagnow have a memorandum of agreement incorporating some landscaping screen on the, on the aruse parcel, which includes a buffer of evergreens to alleviate the visual impacts created by the accessory structure. The granting of these variances especially contingent upon these evergreen trees being planted on the north side of the structure to buffer structure view from north neighbor as generally described in memorandum of agreement between Douglas Lagnow and Mr. Wurles dated December ninth, two thousand twenty-two. Subject to the planning board review and approval of such landscape plan, the structure will be painted to blend with surrounding woods as presented by the renter's and client Uh, section four, the granting of these variances does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any other required permits and or approvals. The purpose of proposed structures must be constructed and performed with the applications and plan submitted. The area variances, variances shall be null void unless proposed construction is commenced within one year of this resolution. Any discussion?
Any questions? This question? I mean, if you notice that we went, as we went through.
Sure.
Uh, they were just typos, basically. I didn't have any problem with the content of the resolution. So we have the, we have the also known ass to begin.
Yeah, is that in there?
Yeah. On page three, on site visit, uh, which takes the E out of my name, so this small one. And then as we get on page five, there's a couple of instances from there to the end where it said after Hill Road instead of after Hook on D at the top of page five.
Where's, where's that?
Uh, D at the top of page five. Maybe I have a, do I have a down?
I might have a different mind numbering where it's gone off. So what letter, B as in boy or D as in door?
Uh, D is in door. At the top of page five.
Oh, I see. I was looking at after, I'm like the last right.
Uh, after, oh, and then there's another one on the next page. On page six, in section A, uh, it also says after Hill and should be book.
Okay.
I think that was all that I saw.
Oh.
Um, any other questions?
Uh, I've noticed one, it was just a typo as well. So section three, I think, I believe that it was fully signed on December nineteenth, I'm just changing that. Instead of saying that the memorandum was dated December ninth, I put nineteen. Um, and I made some edits while I was, while Tim was reading it. Um, the, one of the variances was, uh, that it shall not be more floor area than the principal dwelling or fifteen hundred. So I just, sometimes it said of, I suppose, or, so I just changed it just to, that's just a typo. And I just want to say, I spoke to Scott Bergen today, um, he's not here today, but he just wanted to express his thanks to, um, the applicant, um, for working with the neighbor and for reducing the, some of the variances. So he just wanted to express his, he always appreciates when the neighbors are able to come together and just work on the solution. So he just wanted to express that. Okay. Uh, any other discussions from the board? Does anyone want to make a motion?
Sure. I make a, uh, I motion to approve a resolution.
That's, uh, corrected at?
Corrected, yes, corrected.
Okay. Do we want to call everybody for a motion? You want to have a second?
Second.
Oh, yes, we do. Second, one second. Tim Allenbrook.
Yes.
Tim Ekinoply.
Yes.
Catherine Clark.
Yes.
I'll find and check marks later.
Thank you. Thanks to all of you for your work, for all of your work. You can do it.
I should have brought a bottle of laundry.
You got the first.
Why is that, is that wrong? No, it's the laundry, blotchery. Thanks very much.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim, for that resolution. It was a, it was a good resolution, and I think you really played with the factors and the balance.
It is. It's kind of a pleasure.
Yes.
Was there a resolution?
I don't see it, I don't see it anymore. It's the only time I ever see you, or I ever saw you.
Well, thanks for your service.
Yeah.
Happy holidays.
Yeah, happy holidays.
Thank you.
And then you have another resolution. So Richard Kupusansky did this one, he's not here. Would anybody like to read it or I can read it?
Uh, I, I can read it.
Sure.
Uh. Yeah, sorry about that. I know where this is going.
That's totally off the record, too.
Uh, the resolution of the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board appeals in matter of the area variance application of Penny Hyde Levine and Fred Levine, Z.B.A. case number ten thirty-five. Background.
Yeah, I'll have Gretchen send the final.
Yep. You sent a video?
Yes, I'll have Gretchen send.
Happy holidays here.
Thanks, guys. Happy holidays, guys. Uh, the owner applicant is Penny Hyde Levine and Fred Levine, referred to hereafter as the applicant. The applicant is represented by Warren Temple Smith, R.A. of Warren Temple Smith Architects Al Dolsy. Property involved, this appeal involves property located at twenty-three Hook Road in the Town of Rhinebeck and which bears the tax parcel number one-three-five-zero-eight-nine-dash-six-one-seven-one-dash-zero-zero-dash-six-three-one-six-one-seven. The applicant's property is one point oh-two acres in area and is in the R.A. ten zoning district. Description of the proposed project, the applicant wants to construct an attached two-car garage to the east side of their existing residence, which will include a studio space above. The side yard setback in the R.A. ten zoning district is one hundred feet. The garage will be ninety-five point five feet from the side yard that the applicant is requesting a four-point-five-foot variance from the side setback. Uh, variance requested, a variance is requested for the side yard setback, uh, it's requested from the following section of the zoning law. In the R.A. ten zoning district, the side yard setback is a hundred feet. The addition of the garage to the existing residential house will be ninety-five point five feet. The applicant is requesting a variance of four-point-five feet. Uh, timeliness of appeal, the applicant filed an appeal with this board on September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two, and has paid the requisite fee. The appeal was filed within sixty days of the date of the Z.E.O.'s determination, uh, appealed from, dated September seventh, two thousand twenty-two, and thus the application is timely as required by section one-two-five-one-two-five-B of the Town of Rhinebeck zoning law. This application was deemed complete and accepted by this board on October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, CECPRA, after accepting this appeal, we determine that this matter should be classified to type-two action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, CECPRA, because it is the granting of individual setback and lot line variances and adjustments as provided in, uh, six-one-seven dot five C sixteen. No further environmental review is required pursuant to CECPRA. Referrals and responses. Uh, the application was referred to Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board on October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Planning Board responded on November fourteenth, uh, two thousand twenty-two, stating that the requested variance is rated as affecting planning or environmental concern. The application was also referred to the Conservation Advisory Board, Waterfront Advisory Committee. and Waterfront Advisory Committee on October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. To date, the CABWAC has not provided a response. As thirty days have elapsed since the referral was made to Conservation Advisory Board and Waterfront Advisory Committee, the ZBA is able to make a final decision on this application without having such response from the town of Wax. Site visit. On December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, ZBA member Richard Kupaschansky visited the applicant's property and surrounding neighborhood to observe fact firsthand on-site conditions, property characteristics, setting, surrounding environment in the territory of the surrounding neighborhood. The applicant's property is setback from the road on the south beach side of the house, where the addition proposed just as far as they would have liked across the street and all doors. A public hearing of this appeal was duly advertised and held on November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. There were no comments from the public presented during the meeting and no written comments submitted. The public hearing was closed on November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. My needs and facts and conclusions of law. Balancing test. In order to view the variance on we have considered the benefit to the applicant of the area variance of friend as weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or the community by such grant. We determine that the variance requested should be granted because there is no detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or the community by the granting of this variance. Consideration of five factors in balancing test. In our determination, we have considered the five factors required by section one-two-five-one-two-four-C-one of the Town of Bryanbeck zoning law as follows. A, if the variance is granted, will it cause undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or cause a detriment to nearby properties? We find the answer to this question is no. The addition of the garage is included with the residential neighborhood. Moreover, the driveway to the garage will travel along a sparsely wooded lot. The garage itself will be mostly sublevel from the road following the existing concrete structure and therefore will not set taller than the existing residential structure. The studio above the garage will be on the same level with the existing home and would have been seamlessly with the rest of the house. Thus, it will resemble more of an addition to the existing structure rather than an additional garage added to the structure. Can the benefits sought by the applicant be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance? We find the question for this... The answer to this question is no. The property is a pre-existing non-conforming lot and therefore smaller in size than conforming lots in the RA ten zoning district. Given the smaller lot size, there is limited space available as to where a garage can be added without requiring a setback variance with respect to one of the property values. The proposed location is a reasonable location for a garage to be attached to the house, which provides accessibility to the applicant while also providing reasonable setbacks to the adjoining property. Is the requested area variance substantial? We find the answer to this question is no because the four-point-five-feet requested variance from a hundred-foot setback is not human, numerically substantial. Furthermore, the side yard closest to the garage's borders are a new lot, and the property is also heavily loaded in the back of the property into the west as well. The adjoining lot board owners should not notice any discernible differences to the property by this addition. Will the proposed variance have an adverse impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? We find the answer to this question is no because it is very densely populated area, and the garage addition sits back from the road, so it won't be noticed from the road either. Moreover, due to the existing topography of the property, the garage will sit within the existing concrete structure property. There will not be excavation needed to put garage in the landscape. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? We find the answer to this question is no. The sunburn for this property has changed since the owner's acquisition thereof, which suggests the difficulty is not self-created. Any granting of variance? We find that it cleans up the front of the house with having cars put away on the side yard as opposed to the front of the house closest to the road. Minimal variance requested. In addition to our review of the five factors in balancing test, we must also determine that the requested variance is the minimum variance necessary and adequate to accomplish what is requested by the applicant. We find the answer to this question is yes. Placing the addition in this area is a logical location for a garage to existing residential house and it does not disrupt the character of the neighborhood. Now therefore be resolved based on all the facts described above and upon the reasoning described below as follows. And the reason described above, excuse me, as follows. The ZBA hereby grants the variance requested by the applicant, finding that the benefit to the applicant outweighs any detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or the community by such a grant. The variance is granted for four-point-five feet to permit the applicant to construct an attached two-part garage to the studio above. The granting of this variance shall also be expressly contingent upon the applicant's full payment to the Town of Bryanbeck of any and all fees expressed or deposited through conjunction or in connection with this application in full compliance with Article fourteen, the reimbursement of the Town of Bryanbeck zoning law. This variance shall not be deemed granted until all such needs are paid and fulfilled by the applicant. The granting of this variance does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any of the required permits or approvals. The proposed addition must be constructed in conformity with the application and plans submitted. The area variance shall be null and void unless the proposed construction is commenced within one year of this resolution. Okay. Are there any discussions or any comments? Any editorial?
I thought it was pretty straightforward, the whole project. Made a lot of sense.
I did, too. I mean, I drive by there every day. I know when they did the site visit, it was kind of free to me. I just know that property and that road and that we didn't all have to go at the same time. Any other comments?
Just number three, it says garbage instead of garage.
Okay. Where is that?
Three. Two garbage.
Yes, I think we should probably update that. Thank you. So I think if there's no other discussion, I make a motion to approve the resolution. Do I have a second?
How would that change? That Gretchen pointed out.
Yes. Yes, would that update? Gretchen pointed out. Go ahead, second. Tim, how about you? Okay. Gretchen, do you want to pull one with you?
Tim Ellman?
Yes.
Tim Ekinoplis?
Yes.
Catherine Clark?
Yes.
And before we adjourn, I wanted to actually, just reading through the Levine resolution, going back to arroos, I know that we just adopted it. I just wanted to add that little section, the one that we usually have to send our resolutions just saying that they have to pay whatever's in their escrow. Would you be... Anybody opposed to including that in the arroos? Making it edit through?
No.
No. Okay. Could you just have, make a motion to incorporate? And then a second? And then we'll take... Gretchen, I can take care of it.
Yes. I make a motion that we amend the arroos application and educate the board.
Which would just add that the applicant would have to pay the fees and escrow that might be due in connection to the application.
Yeah.
And a second?
All second.
Hold on a second.
Aye.
Aye. Anything else for this meeting?
Just to say, this is Tim Ekinoplis, one meeting. And again, I'll be happy myself and also I'm happy to Scott. We thank you. It was great working with you. I know Scott wanted to say a little special thank you, but we really appreciate all of your insights that you provided. You had some really tough resolutions.
Very nice work.
You were a sign guy, but...
Very nice work with you.
He's going to do the signing resolution.
Kim's got it.
But anyway, thank you. Thank you for everything you did, Tim. And while I'm with you.
It was a very interesting... What I did.
Thank you. And I would just like to say, everyone have a holidays.
Yes.
And whatever kind of celebration you do, I hope it's safe and you all get into a happy new year.
Thank you. And I know, sorry, I know Scott also wanted to just thank Panda for being here at the meetings and being the recorder.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I guess, what do you say, John? Hold on a second.
Aye.
Aye.